Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting for the City of New Brunswick for March 10th, 2015.
Well, Bob.
Claire Barber.
Here.
Chris Stellafella.
Here.
Betsy Garlatti. David Henry. Joe Catnese.
Here.
Linda Hunter.
Here.
Carly Newbauer.
Here.
Luzepa Rojas.
Here.
Andy Kaplan.
Jeff Crum.
Here.
Suzanne Mudwick.
Here. Public announcement over the Public Meeting Act.
Please be advised, notice requirements to open public meetings act have been complied with and satisfied with the annual notice of the explicit notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings at the planning board of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with city clerk and placed in the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Myers Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspapers of the City of New Brunswick naming the homeless community as Starlight.
Please stand personally to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the boards February 26, 2015, meeting.
Members received copies of the minutes unless there were any changes or additions. A motion to approve would be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Sangram.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed.
Communications and reports, resolutions of memorialization. David Naim Abizlayman, PV 2014-11. Site plan and variance application for the construction of a mixed-use building located at 50 Eastern Avenue, block 49, lot 30.01, zoning district C, dash four.
Members received copies of the resolution. Unless there are any changes or additions, a motion to approve the resolution would be in order. The persons eligible to vote are Mr. Mudwick, Mr. Crum, Mr. Newbauer, Mr. Barber, Mr. Stellafella. That's it.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Claire Barber.
Yes.
Chris Stellafella.
Yes.
Carly Newbauer.
Yes.
Jeff Crum.
Yes.
Suzanne Mudwick.
Yes.
Good.
Old Business Construction Management Associates, PV 2013-25. Site plan and variance application for the construction of a residential building located at 17 Mine Street, block 71, lot 4.01, zoning district R-5A, redevelopment area two. And I think we're over.
As members recall, we ended last month, we were in the public comment portion. There were a couple of people in line to speak at that time. So if they want to come up or not, or anyone else wants to come up and speak, it's a public comment time.
What do you sound in?
Madam Chair, before that occurs, I don't know if we finished the thought last month on there was an issue, a jurisdictional issue regarding the D5 variance.
Which issue did you bring up most recently that we haven't addressed?
Well, Mr. Haynefall, as you recall last week, we had a discussion as to whether or not there was a jurisdiction issue here with the D5 variance based upon testimony of Mr. Gamm, our planner.
Madam Chair.
And I don't know if we ever finished that, you know, that statement. I have some thoughts I'd like to put on the record. If you wish me to do that now, or I could wait until later. It's at the pleasure of the Chair.
I prefer to go back into the public comment and then when you, then you can address the concerns.
Madam Chair, may I?
Sure.
My concern is that maybe council overlooked putting this on the record last time, but I thought that the board and you as Chair had been quite clear that the objector could put whatever evidence they wanted. And I believe that the objector indicated that he would defer only in the instance and would reserve his rights to once again address the board if there were comments that were made by the public. I leave it to the board and the Chair, but I thought that council was fairly clear that he had put on all the evidence that he sought to put on. And there were no other open issues that this board needed to consider with regards to procedural issues that are being brought up yet again.
That was how we left it at the last meeting. And you only had reserved the right to make comments after public comment. We had addressed that objection at that point. I believe it was on the record.
I can make a point of closing.
Okay.
If you wish.
That's fine. Public comment.
Ladies and gentlemen, raise your right hand, state your names, say your last name, please.
Elizabeth Ciccone, C-I-C-C-O-N-E.
And do you sort through this matter?
Yes, I do.
Please do.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Ciccone. My husband and I own and occupy the William H. Johnson House, circa 1870, at 52 Welton Street in New Brunswick. The William H. Johnson House has been listed on the State of New Jersey National Registers of Historic Places since 2006. I'm the Secretary of Treasurer, the friends of the William H. Johnson House, and I'm the Secretary Emerita of the New Brunswick Historical Society. As such, I'm considered an expert on New Brunswick history. In that capacity, I'd like to speak against the construction which would require the proposed parking variance being requested from the Mine Street Historic District. Although I testified previously before the planning board, that was in regard to the prior application, and circumstances have changed significantly since then, so I'm speaking out again today. The Mine Street Historic District has received a certification of eligibility letter for the portion of Mine Street where this construction would occur. The COE, Certification of Eligibility, is the first step in making the neighborhood a National Register listed Historic District. Yes, it's true that the COE allows for the ability to apply for National Register status, and that that is not the same as being officially listed. However, the COE does allow for the same rights and protections that the full listing allows. That means that just having a COE is enough to invoke the protections under the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 amendments, which include authorization of a Section 106 review by the federal and state of New Jersey Departments of Environmental Protection.
Just slow down a little bit, it's my thing. Try to keep up.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I apologize.
I'll just go ahead and thank you.
Because they've received the Certification of Eligibility, they're entitled to a Section 106 review by federal and state of New Jersey Departments of Environmental Protection, and to ensure that the Secretary of Interior standards are being upheld. Those protections, particularly this Section 106 review, are specifically designed to protect historical resources against encroachment by public works projects. Encroachment is specifically defined to mean the adverse effect upon any district, site, building, structure, or object included in the New Jersey Register resulting from the undertaking of a project by the state, a county, municipality, or an agency or instrumentality thereof. I would suggest that a building the size and scope of which will literally block out the sun from shining on the historic district is exactly what is meant by the definition of encroachment. In this case, though the petitioners are acting like they are a private entity, they're actually an instrumentality of the municipality under the definition, under the municipality of the City of New Brunswick, and thus are covered under the National Historic Preservation Act definition of encroachment. Further, even if you can construe them as being private regardless, once the construction begins and the City of New Brunswick implements requisite upgrades to infrastructure, including opening the street up for a sewer system upgrade, this automatically becomes a public works project. At that point, the Section 106 review will have to be passed before any work can proceed. I am certain that all of this is true because I went through the exact same thing when the City of New Brunswick wanted to do sewer upgrades just under the foundation of my house. The city engineer, Tom Fielding, can verify this. Because we had that Certification of Eligibility for our home, the city was forced to undergo multiple levels of review, incurring additional costs and timeframe delays which pushed the sewer upgrades back by several years, costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. In addition to all of that, the city was required to perform a site survey of the home and special vibration study to ensure that the actions of the construction would not do any damage to our historic home. This included extensive vibration monitoring while the construction was going on. The reason that level of monitoring was required was because the house that was right next door to ours had previously fallen into a sinkhole and was demolished. The point of me stating this is that it makes it clear how unstable the ground under New Brunswick really is. Couple this with the fact that the location in question is sitting right over an abandoned mine site, I believe the same or better levels of monitoring for this project will be required. There is one other issue I'd like to address. For the average citizen, the issue of parking variance has not been made very clear by the petitioners. For example, at different meetings I've attended, there seems to be conflicting information about the number of spots relative to the number of housing units. There have been discussions of numbers of units, discussions of how many people drive or estimate could be living in each unit. None of this has been very clear to me as a late person. What I figured out was this, the building should have 96 parking spots. The petitioners want a variance that will allow them to have 43 spots, a reduction of 53 spots. If I have this kind of little bit off, it's understandable because all along I haven't been able to tell how many spots in the first place. Of the 43 spots, one or two will be reserved for handicapped spaces. Then, an additional one to two spots will be reserved for zip cars, or whatever company the contract family goes to. That would leave only 39 to 41 spots for the regular use of the residents of the buildings and their guests. Considering there will be 52 apartment units in the building, I think, maybe that changed too, I can barely keep up, some with more than one bedroom, I do not understand how the petitioners can claim there would be no detrimental effect to the historic district due to the parking variance. There isn't even enough parking for each unit to have one spot assigned to it. Considering that some families don't have cars and that some families have multiple cars, a minimum of one spot per housing unit should be required. In closing, I'd like to point out that based on the testimony I've seen before this board, as a whole, the citizens of New Brunswick do not want the board to issue this variance. The fact that some of the hearings had to be adjourned due to overcrowding, our testament to that fact, that should say something about the level of interest of the city residents. Because I'm an advocate for historic preservation, you may think that I would be against any building that would be trapped from any historic neighborhood in the city, but that's not actually true. I've never come before this board regarding any other issue, including the one that affected my own home. I'm here to protest this building on this site. Some of the projects the petitioners have built were perfectly acceptable for their locations. This one is simply not a good project for the site in question. The petitioners should have their plans rejected in favor of something more to the aesthetic and scale of the other buildings within the historic district. Therefore, I'm requesting that the planning board deny the parking variance for these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Ladies and gentlemen, raise your right hand, state your names, say your last name, please.
Jean, J-E-A-M, Fox, at the lights.
And do you sort through this matter?
I do.
Good.
Thank you. For the evening, I'm Jean Fox, I'm a long-term New Brunswick resident. I want to thank you first for serving as a representative of the planning board. It's a tough job sometimes in this country, one of them, and we do it for the public interest. My husband Steve and I, I went to college in New Brunswick, I went to Douglas, he went to Rutgers, we bought a home here in 1981 on New York Avenue, the sixth ward down by St. Peter's, after I graduated law school. Our reasons for living in New Brunswick are clear, the city is up and coming, I'm active at Rutgers at the University, still am, downtown New Brunswick has been improving as we thought of what we frequently used to use, Easton Avenue businesses a lot. We don't do that anymore. I've watched how New Brunswick has improved, and it's a good thing for the city. My husband's office is on Church Street. This is our home, I love the city. I came to express my opinion as a New Brunswick resident who is now not being allowed to frequent the businesses that we used to frequent on Easton Avenue. I've been following this project for a while, and actually showed up the last year in the half of City Hall, couldn't get into the room. And I'm here urging you tonight to reject the parking variance. It is not in the public interest, it is the wrong thing to do. This applicant has not demonstrated any reason for having to have that variance. There were rationales that you would stand up when the city established the parking requirements. This applicant has nothing but made promises that I don't think you can fulfill for what your intended behavior would improve it. As you just said, I'm told that the 52-unit building, 96 parking spaces should be required, yet he's asking for only 43 of them, which is a 55% deficit. I want to note also, there's no visitor parking here, even though you have to have it Monday through Friday, 24/7 in that area, you have to have a permit of visitor or resident, so that could be a problem too. We all know, I work crews a lot, and I take these to now and drive down Mine Street a lot, that is a very crowded area already. I think past variances that you have created have added to that, in addition to things like Robert Johnson cruising size even though we have parking decks. The applicant is on record that he will waive the right of his tenants to obtain resident parking permits, including visitor permits, once the 43 spots are taken up. So if you decide to live there after those 43 spots are gone, you have no place to put your car. Now, there are some people who might, the very few, and we all know what's going to happen. You all know it, and you know it. They're going to bring cars anyway, they're going to park on Union Street, they're going to park on Easton Avenue, and people who want to go to the businesses and restaurants along Easton Avenue are not going to be able to do it. It's bad now, you're just adding this, will make it worse, and your past variances have made it worse. And we know that's the case. People are from New Jersey, people drive their cars, they're not going to park it someplace else, they're not going to not have a car. They're going to have a car, and they're going to park it wherever they can park it, legally or not. So, I really think that the businesses along Easton Avenue are being seriously hurt. I personally believe that Evelyn's, which was one of my favorite restaurants, closed down in March part three department. We were talking to the owner a lot. I ask you to speak, if you haven't already, officially speak, do a survey of the businesses along Easton Avenue, tell them that there will not be any retribution against them if you talk to them, and if they take their true honest responses. They think this has hurt them, they know it's hurting them, they can't have, they don't have parking for their customers, like I used to be, they don't have parking for the people who walk there. It's not good for that part of New Brunswick. There's no parking back up there like we had down there. So, there really is no legitimate reason for this board to grant a variance for parking for this facility, absolutely not. I've read everything there was to read, and I've listened to some of the tapes of your proceedings. There is no rationale given legitimately for this. You say, well, we won't have more than 43 apartments to have. Great, they're going to park somewhere, they're going to have cars. So, I ask you as public servants to do what is in the public interest, which is your sworn responsibility to do, and to not have parking variance.
Is there any other public comment?
女士， raise your right hand, state your names, say your last name, please.
Charles Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
And do you sort through the whole truth in there?
Yes, I do.
This is a new comment, Charles?
Yes. I'd like to start by just saying that it's an honor and pleasure to speak before you tonight, and I also really respect the hard job that you have, and I thank you for your service. I want to echo and agree with the comments of the two speakers tonight. I am wary of reading today because I care about the environment, and I'd like to ask the starters a few questions about the environmental impact statement. When was the environmental impact statement completed?
Madam Chair, is you asking this of any witnesses? I thought we have concluded the cross-examination of witnesses. This is for public comment?
Can I just answer to the question?
I don't have a problem answering it. It was submitted December 30th, I believe.
It was December 31st.
December 31st.
Okay. And when was the application initiated?
Submitted about February 25th, 31st.
So, more than a year before. Why was there no environmental impact statement submitted with the original application?
I have no answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Madam Chair, as I think I explained, I guess it was two meetings ago, or three meetings ago, our records had indicated that an EIS had been submitted, we had it checked off on our checklist. In going through the file, we didn't see one there, and so maybe it was an oversight that the box had been inadvertently checked off. As soon as we noticed that, we advised the applicant, advised the board that they needed to submit one, and the applicant did an EIS and submitted it based on December 31st.
Right, so my question is, why did the applicant not go? They hadn't done something that was required, under the impression it was not required to do an environmental impact statement?
But the application was deemed incomplete. The reasons for submitting or not submitting it are unknown, it was an oversight.
You're unknown. Well, I would suggest...
He said it was an oversight.
Right. So, does the, I mean, this developer's been before boards before, yours, maybe not yours, but the zoning board. Have they ever submitted an environmental impact statement?
I'm not sure about that, but they're saying it was an oversight and this matters, so please move on to your next comment.
Okay. I'd like to support some of the claims that were made of this environmental impact statement. Does not talk about the environment very much. It's four pages long. The vast majority of it deals with history and historical things. I would suggest that the environmental impact statement was completed by someone who has been questioned about their credentials and did not have credentials to weigh in on this in this way. I also, I'll let the board know, I filed an open request for some documents from the zoning board. And perhaps Mr. Patterson can clear it up, but for the applications that required environmental impact statements, I was not presented with any document called an environmental impact statement. Can you ask Mr. Patterson to clarify why these other applications don't have environmental impact statements?
If you'd like to answer, but I don't know how that has anything to do with this application for us to know.
Sometimes applicants ask for waivers, and it's something, it's an item that can't be waived. So, I know some environmental impact statements were provided to Mr. Cradaville and on other applications. I don't recall exactly, this is a couple of months ago, that waivers may have been granted on those.
Okay. I just think this is not good enough. If you all care about the environment, this is not good enough. We're talking about stormwater management, three sentences about it. One of those sentences says runoff that is not captured by the underground detention basin will continue to flow toward College Avenue. That sounds like could be more flooding. That doesn't assuage my concerns about this, and I shouldn't assuage yours. Sensitive environmental features, one sentence. Utilities, one sentence. Traffic, two sentences. That's the extent of the non-historical portion of this environmental impact statement. So I just want to paint a picture for you. The application was filed in October 2013. 14 months later, after several hearings, public hearings were conducted, after two different versions of the plan were submitted, then and only then did the developer go out and issue this hurried, flimsy environmental impact statement, which I would suggest does not even meet the obligation. It should have been submitted, first of all, before they, or at the time they submitted their plans, and it's concerning that such an oversight could be made. I understand Mr. Patterson's office probably gets a lot of applications, and that oversight I don't understand. But how an applicant would have public hearings for a year and not be meeting the requirements of that application, and then just cover it up like this really quickly? I don't see how that's an honest oversight. I see that as a core problem with the application, that it does not account for the environment. It does not, it obviously was an afterthought. The environment was an afterthought here, and that's why we see 85% coverage of the site. You know, that's why we see green space being taken away, tree being taken down, and that's why ultimately we see a profit motive. The only motive for building such a large building is to make profit, and I'm not the first to say that, so I won't belabor the point. But I'm very concerned at the impact this building will have on the environment. I think each and every one of you should be, as you prepare to vote for or against it. I also do want to introduce into evidence a promotional document for the building involved. I have made copies of the relevant parts. Could I put this into the record?
I'd like to see it first.
Sure.
Can you describe it a little more, something?
Certainly. This is called "The Future Starts Here," it's a College Avenue redevelopment initiative. It's signed to Rutgers and DEPCO. It has a map of several different projects. One is called Housing for New Brunswick Theological Seminary and Rutgers University LL, and it's on this site.
I object to this. This is not anything that's been prepared or submitted by my client, has nothing to do with...
Well, good news to a male bringing up in his testimony in the same flyer about DEPCO's involvement, and it was determined that it was old, you know, it was prior to this application and not involving this applicant.
Yes.
Would you like to see it?
No, we're not going to allow it.
Oh, okay. It's okay, there's only one document I need to get into evidence tonight, and it's a very important one. But first, I also like to introduce this one to evidence, this is the mayor, and two running mates of his, and on the back is the treasurer, Mr. Jay Catnese.
This is all in the same flyer, you may access.
Yeah, and I was told to bring supporting evidence. I was told that what I had wasn't sufficient, so I would need something more substantive.
No, I'm looking at this email, it wasn't a conflict.
Madam Chair, if I may, I admitted at the meeting that Mr. Cradaville first brought this issue up, that I was the treasurer of the organization. I don't deny that. He doesn't need evidence. It was already addressed at the prior meeting, and it was determined that it's not a conflict.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, then it doesn't need to be in evidence. I thank you for committing that. Before I get to that, though, I do want to speak about this project. I've resided in town for 10 years, as I said, I have attended planning and zoning meetings many times, I've spoken for and against projects by this developer, I've, sometimes I just ask questions, but in this case, I am here to urge you to seriously reconsider any thought of passing this application. This application would essentially exacerbate some of the problems that your master plan sets forth as a goal eliminated. I think that the master plan rightly puts a focus on homeownership, especially in the fifth and sixth wards, where we've seen in the past, you know, decade and decade before that, huge drop in homeownership, a lot more renters than homeowners, and the master plan rightly wants to change that. I would suggest this approval, especially combined with the other approvals of other boards, is only going to further that the problem of a lack of homeownership. You've heard testimony from multiple homeowners on this block. Every single one of them is wholeheartedly against this. If we want to make Mine Street a place where people are going to want to own homes and live in the homes they own, we probably shouldn't pass this project. We should listen to the people who live on that block, who make it their home, and have chosen to invest, you know, the earnings that they've made on that block. I think it's very important to respect that, and I think that ultimately, no one here has said that this plot of land should never be built on. I think everyone agrees that it's not in a satisfactory shape right now, it's just a field of dirt. And I just think that people have raised some very, very serious concerns about it, and they're concerns I want to agree with. You know, specifically that building units that will... You know, specifically that building units that will be this expensive will lead to people who have at least one car and have visitors that have cars. This project is geared towards college students. There's no guarantee that it will be college students, but college students very often have cars and they very often have visitors with cars. This building makes no accommodation for visitor parking. The applicants' own experts have said that the street is at capacity every night. And I don't see how doubling the population of this street could possibly work without adequate parking. I think that the developer initially made a mistake in seeking a variance for this board and misstated the total number of parking spaces that the ordinance and the master plan and redevelopment plan require. In fact, the total required was almost double what they thought they needed. So I think that explains why they provided so few, because in their original calculations, they weren't accounting for the proper requirements. And now that they've been made aware, they're still moving forward. In the same vein, as they were made aware, they had not considered the environmental issues. They said, "Well, we'll just cook up a four-page report and make it look like we care about the environment." Doesn't mean that it had any impact on their thought process for the design and it doesn't mean it's going to have an impact on the neighborhood. I think that the ultimate problem with New Brunswick that, you know, it's, there's a lot of problems with New Brunswick. I don't want to say it's the ultimate problem, but there's no grocery store within walking distance of this place. You need a car. You need a car to be able to live in such a nice apartment that truly is going to be luxury, you know, housing. The people are going to have cars and they're going to want cars and I agree that they will, they will absolutely park on the street and risk getting tickets and get tickets and make it harder for everybody else to park. The grocery store situation is not any closer to being resolved. The public transport system in New Brunswick is subpar. There are very few bus shelters. There are, you know, like we've said, Rutgers bus routes that are not year-round. They're only during the weeks that Rutgers has been sessioned, usually Monday through Friday. Otherwise, they can't really be relied upon. And I think we've also pointed out that just getting to a place like Bound Brook can be more than an hour ordeal if you don't have a car. So I think that in light of that, many of these arguments that the developer is making are, just don't add up with the facts. You know, the fact is that, you know, other variance has been approved for places much closer to the train station. And I think that is much more appropriate to grant parking variance when you're two blocks from the train station. This site is not two blocks from the train station, I can stretch the imagination, it's at least four blocks to the treton-bound side of the New Brunswick station. And if you want to go to New York, it's really going to be an extra, you know, block or so to get to the New York side. I don't think that this is going to, I don't think that the train station being close by is going to make a big difference. I think people are going to have their cars and because they're going to be able to afford them and just because the developer says no, I don't think that's going to stop them. So I do want to ask the developer a couple of questions. 76 Lewis Street is a building that was built for senior citizens by this developer. Can we ask the developer, or can I ask the developer, since he's been a witness today, a witness in these proceedings? Is 76 Lewis age-restricted housing today?
I don't see any relevance in this.
Please keep your comments contained to this application. 17 Mine Street.
Right, so if I may, the reason I'm asking is because I believe it is no longer age-restricted housing and that would show that the developer has a record of not living up to what he's testified to at boards like this. I think it speaks to the developer's credibility if he's kept his word about keeping 76 Lewis Street age-restricted housing or if it's changed in a meaningful way.
Can we move on to your next comment?
I believe Mr. Broder was a witness. I have the right to ask questions of him, the public. Under the municipal land use law, I have the right to ask questions of him.
I object to the question. It's not relevant to the application. What does that project have to do with this project in a different time and place, a number of years ago?
Madam Chair, there are two matters here. One is, the objection obviously is noted for the record. The second is that the chair was clear that this would be for comments only. Witnesses had previously testified. Mr. Cradaville has, in fact, been up on a number of occasions, if my recollection is correct, and I can go through my notes, and has asked numerous witnesses on cross-examination, has asked them questions. I do not believe that this is the time for cross-examination, but again, I defer to the board and the chair's decision on whether it now wishes to open this up for yet another cross-examination.
No, this is strictly for public comments.
Madam Chair, this is a mistake you're making right now. I have just as much right as any other member of the public and under the law, I have the right to ask questions of wheres.
This portion of the meeting is for public comment, it's not to question witnesses. So please, you can get your comments on record.
And then when will the part be when I can ask questions?
It's passed.
Okay. Still want to put on the record, the question's not relevant.
Not relevant, I understand. I said the same, though.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll stick to making comments and I hope you'll indulge me. This board has made a comedy of errors in the course of considering this. The first was having an attorney who works for Rutgers University.
Madam Chair, this is all repetitive. I'm sorry, I'll cut you off, but I took notes of everybody's testimony and everything that Mr. Cradaville has said today is been a repeat of something else.
This is supposed to be new comment. New comment, that's what, that's what I asked when you first stepped out. I said it's supposed to be new comment. You said yes. This is stuff you've addressed in the past for this application.
Okay, so can I ask, have all the board members taken their oath of office? They've been sworn in, say you say?
Yes.
Yes. By the way, congratulations, Mr. Kelso. Welcome to the board. The professionals have all been sworn in, they're supposed to tell the truth, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Does that include the attorney?
Madam Chair, don't provide testimony for the board.
Okay, so the developers have been sworn in, he was a witness. Developers' experts were sworn in, I was sworn in, I have to tell the truth. Can you tell me, was the developer's attorney sworn in?
He doesn't need to be sworn in.
Exactly. So my point here is that you should be suspect of what the attorneys in this room tell you. They are the only ones who have not sworn to tell the truth. And Mr. Kelso has repeatedly been allowed to inject factual testimony about this case. For instance, it was mentioned that there's a deal now between the seminary and the developer for some of these units to be rented to the seminary. The terms of the deal can't be disclosed, it's top secret. Can you ask your attorney, is it proper for an attorney to set forth facts without a factual basis to give testimony himself?
If it was a closed deal, he can't, he can't speak about it.
What I indicated as an officer of the court, that I made a representation to the board that the agreement exists, and I'm held to that representation.
And so can you ask your attorney if it's appropriate for, your attorney, not the developer's attorney, if it's appropriate for an attorney to introduce such a thing without supporting it with a document?
Madam Chair, all attorneys have a duty to be candid, to have candor towards a tribunal in this, or a court. We're not in a court right now, this is a tribunal. And the attorneys that are present here, the applicant's attorney, the objector's attorney, and I as the board's attorney are bound to provide our candid opinions. There are also additional facts that can be put on as a matter of record. If the attorneys can in fact state that as an officer of the court, that they can put some fact on the record that would otherwise be explained through a lengthy process of witnesses, for instance. That fact of whether there is or isn't a deal is not dispositive on whether this board should grant a variance. It is a consideration for the board to, of course, take into account, but it is not dispositive on the issue of granting or denying a variance.
So if I were allowed to ask questions, I would ask some questions about this new testimony that's been introduced by Mr. Kelso.
But you're not, so please, no more.
Yeah, I know. So Mr. Broder will not tell us how many years this deal is for, will he?
I don't know that, I don't have an answer for that. I don't know that he knows.
Well, if there's a deal, I'd imagine the deal would have a timeframe.
Do you have any other comments?
I'd like to know. This is relevant. Mr. Kelso has spoken about it. Can I know how many years that the seminary promised to rent for Mr. Broder in this building?
Is that something that you...
I'll make a representation. The initial agreement is for a term of 15 years and with the ability to extend it at the seminary's option.
And now, why won't Mr. Broder say that?
His attorney just answered.
Right, I'm just saying that the attorney is not a witness. He hasn't been sworn in as a witness. They're not supposed to make these representations.
Do you have any other comments?
Yes.
I have copies of this from all the attorneys involved and one for you, Madam Chair.
So, Madam Chair, that's a form that's been obtained from the New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission. It is, the documents that are filed by the New Brunswick Democratic Organization. And if you look on those first few pages, you'll see donations.
I don't see the relevance of this to the site made application.
The donations are from Mr. Kelso and from the applicant.
I don't see the relevance to the application.
Okay, well, if you turn to the back few pages, you'll see payments made by the New Brunswick Democratic Organization. And you'll see payment to yourself. You'll see a payment to Clarion Barber Escone.
I think we've discussed all this, we've discussed all this at prior meetings. I don't understand why you're bringing this up again.
No, I made allegation at prior meetings and I was told by your attorney that you need to have something substantive, that you need to have this. I brought it. Those are payments to three of the board members. Mr. Catnese is the other one. You'll also see Kevin Jones on those payments. Kevin Jones was a member of the board, but he's no longer a member of the board. He was a member of the board at the time that this application was moving forward, which is coincidentally the same timeframe that this document was filed with ELEC. It shows money from the developer and his attorney to an organization and in that same cycle, payments to three of these board members.
Mr. Itol, is there any...
I don't see a basis for, he's certainly at liberty to put what he wishes on record. I don't know how that's relevant to this application.
Do you have any other comments?
You guys just answer that in parts into evidence.
Are we putting anything else into evidence through public comment?
Mr. Kelso?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem if the board wants to allow this to be identified. It's a public document, just like all political organization documents, when people are free to exercise their political rights in this country, to who they support and who they don't, who they affiliate with. There's an obligation on the part of an organization such as this to file with the state. Mr. Cradaville took the time and effort to get that document. It's a public document, go for it.
026.
026?
By the way, I would still say it's not relevant, but...
Do you have any other comments?
Yes, I do. Now I need to talk about some even more serious things. So I'm happy about some of the things that have gone on here. I'm happy about the fact that we're in a room where everybody can be comfortable. I'm very pleased that we have a different attorney than the one we started with representing the public here. And I'll be honest, I think that the board should consider having all their meetings in this room because it's just as conveniently located as your old room. It's just more convenient for the people who want to attend and participate and I hope you'll consider that. I've also been concerned about some of the things that I've seen and I do want to speak out against them. First and foremost, the decision to throw out testimony from a previous hearing. I think that folks that came to that meeting were under the impression their testimony...
I think you've spoken on this...
I wouldn't know if I did, I didn't. I haven't spoken since the October meeting.
And that's when we drew the line?
No, actually, you did this at a later date, if you watch the videos. It was not at that meeting that we're supposed to be told. What happened was, actually, I pointed out that there was a huge problem where you said it was a new application, what have you said? And turns out, it actually has the same application number, the applicant didn't pay fees. And so at a later date, you were told to disregard testimony from a previous hearing.
Yes.
And I think that was a huge mistake and you shouldn't have taken that advice. I hope you'll give it the weight it deserves and you will look at that transparent. I was also concerned at the, I believe the October meeting, or at least the November meeting, how one of the members of the public was treated and how his testimony, he wasn't allowed to give testimony about corruption. And I do want to say that, you know, what good is having a planning board if you can't talk about corruption at the planning board? It's fundamental to our democracy that people be able to speak whatever their feelings are.
Please keep your comments directed towards this application.
I will try my best, but I do think that there is a sad history and culture of corruption in Middlesex County.
Okay, that's noted, comments on this application.
And yes, and so in much the same way you're trying to get me to move along, Mr. Olendor was actually explicitly told he could not speak about Mayor John Lynch.
And neither can you. Please speak about this application only.
Okay, well, I have something here that you might want to know. This, I also have copies of for all the attorneys involved and...
I certainly, certainly could be objected to this. It's been business.
Absolutely, these are deeds from the township of Killington, Vermont. What they show is that on a certain date in 1981...
What does this have to do, this has nothing to do with 17 Mine Street?
It has to do with the attorney who is chuckling right now.
Because it's bizarre, Charlie, it's bizarre.
Maybe you should ask Mr. Kelso why he gave the mayor a condo.
That has nothing to do, what you're talking about, has nothing to do with 17 Mine Street.
If I could explain...
His relationship with someone outside this room, not dealing with this application.
If I could please explain. Mr. Lynch was convicted of crimes related to securing approvals from the government on behalf of his clients. The US attorney alleged there was a network of corruption... The US Attorney alleged that there was a network of corruption working to make that possible, and actually, coincidentally perhaps, the conviction came as a result of a matter at South Brunswick.
I guess that has to do with this...
As you know, your prior attorney has ties to South Brunswick. What my concern is, is that the developers in this town, specifically Devco, who Mr. Kelso has represented for decades, and they are the landowner in this case.
I'm going to ask you to either move forward, speak about something different, this is not relevant to this application.
So...
There's a portion of the meeting, that's for other public concerns after the application, if you want to address something. This is not the time for this.
Okay, forgive me, I just wanted to point out that the attorney for the landowner...
Please move forward, nothing else, nothing else.
The attorney for the landlord gave the former mayor a condo.
I'm going to ask you to step down altogether, if you don't stop.
In Sherwood, Vermont...
Charlie, can I...
Madam Chair, at this point, I don't know that he's adding anything to this application. You've admonished him several points now to move on to another topic. If Mr. Cradaville feels that he needs to put this on the record for some reason and it's relevant to the application, I think you can reasonably conclude that he's being disruptive to the meeting process. This is, I'm not sure that I can tie this in to what this has to do with this application.
Do you have any other comments about any other things relating to this application?
Yes. I would suggest that the reason you might not understand how this applies is because I've repeatedly been stopped from...
A different topic. Mr. Cradaville, I asked you several times.
I understand.
So don't try sneaking it in, don't try saying it a different way.
So I want to be clear, the deeds that I presented here are not going to be...
Are not being added to evidence, we're not talking about them.
Okay. Okay. I just want to say why I do what I do. I do it to educate, and I really don't have a personal problem with anyone here. But I think you should know all the facts before you vote, and forgive me if they're facts that maybe you don't like or don't want to know, but I want you to know them and I want the public to know them, so forgive me if they're offensive to you, but these...
It's not offensive, it's not relevant.
Okay. Okay, well, I respectfully disagree. I do think that corruption is relevant.
Okay, so move forward, it's noted, it's on the law.
Especially with all the irregularities that have gone on in these cases, so...
I'm asking you very nicely for the last time.
Okay. So I will just close by saying you're here to decide a parking variance, you've heard ample expert testimony that makes it very clear that the parking variance is not allowed under the law. They must provide visitor parking. They do not provide visitor parking. They do not provide adequate parking for any visitor whatsoever. The situation with the zip cars or whatever is going to be there is completely just a representation that will not necessarily come true, and I think that the experts correctly pointed out that a lot of the arguments about that were overstated, that they explicitly, you know, put you under the wrong impression about the impact the zip car would have on this project. I also would like you to think about some of the other buildings that have been built by this developer. I don't think it's outrageous to think of that as... Mr. Kelso likes to object when I'm trying to make a point about it, but he himself was practically berating one of the other experts because they hadn't looked at the other properties. I think you should look at the other properties, you should look at the impact they've had on the neighborhood, and I haven't heard any testimony, and if I could ask questions, I would ask questions, to ask the developer whether any of the buildings he's built have maxed out or are parked, whether they've had, you know, situations where people want parking and can't get it. And I would suggest that 76 Lewis would probably be the answer, and in fact, that that's probably the reason why the building's not doing so well. So I think that this is a very profit motivated design, it's a very profit motivated plan. Environmental concerns were put on the back burner, and obviously, some of you have been left hanging out to dry, quite frankly, with concerns about conflicts of interest you might have. The mayor went out of his way to replace Kevin Jones, so he doesn't have to take this responsibility. But I just want to, you know, respectfully ask the three members who have a clear conflict because you've been paid with money provided by the developer through the MBDO, that you recuse yourself. And if you're not ready to do that, you really need to ask yourself if you're prepared to commit a violation tonight. And I hope that you do the right thing and you recuse yourselves on this matter. The public deserves the absolute highest, they should not have any doubts about the integrity of the board or any concerns. Concerns like this should not be able to be raised at this point. And the document is in the record, it makes it very clear that you've received money from an organization that got it from this attorney who is also in charge of it, and the developer. And that already is a doubt, it's too big. It should not be allowed, and I would suggest that there's other documents. This is just the one that I brought that proves it all in one document. But if you look at other documents, it's probably more money than this. And I would really ask you to think twice before casting a vote tonight on this application. Think of the people on Main Street, and think about protecting yourself as well. So thank you for the time, and thank you for considering whatever everybody has to say. I hope in my heart that you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? So the public comment is closed. Would the attorneys like to do a summation at this point?
I believe the order would speed first, and then Mr. Kelso, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Does the chair wish that I stand here? Is it okay if I sit?
It's okay, I think so. As long as everybody can hear me fine.
Everybody hear me? Okay. I'll try to... First of all, Madam Chair, I wanted to just take a brief moment to thank the board individually and collectively for your service and for your handling of this matter for the past year. You've been dedicated, you've been diligent, you've spent time with your families, and to be sure, Mr. Kelso and I haven't agreed about too much in these proceedings, but I'm sure he would agree in my saying that he appreciates it, I appreciate it, and our respect and the minds of each of you. With that said, I'm going to start by discussing what I put on the record last October briefly. I argued that a use variance was needed per NJSA 4055D 71 because mid-rise apartments are not permitted in the RA5 zone, and the board rejected that argument. That argument was premised on Section 5D of the College Avenue Redevelopment Plan not according to supplement or supersede the use requirements for the RA5 zone. It would make area two an overlay onto the RA5. I also argued at the time that a use variance was still needed, even if the RA5 was superseded by apartment, resounding property question to IN1. As all apartment buildings in the IN1 must be universally owned and operated, and this one is privately operated, and the board rejected that argument. Now, last month, our planner Gordon Gemma testified that a D5 variance was necessary because density in the IN1 zone has exceeded. His argument was premised on the RA5 provisions being superseded. For the record, I wanted to indicate that we are not waiving any arguments for building blocks for same that were set forth previously, time around in October, to the effect that the arguments based on RA5 provisions not being superseded. We wanted to make it clear that the argument that we advanced with the assumption that the RA5 provisions are being superseded in the alternative. And this is also true with the argument advanced by Mr. Gemma regarding the D5 variance. In that scenario, if this board finds that the RA5 provisions are not superseded, the RA5 zone, you know, does have a density standard of 10 units. So it's essentially the same analysis that he previously put on the record last month, and looking to other areas of the code for the mid-rise density restrictions should be included. In that respect, according to Section 17.04.040, capital C, 6A, Design Orders of the City of Brunswick, the purpose of the RA5 district is to, RA5A district is to provide for the expansion and preservation of the integrity of medium-density, single-family, and two-family residential areas within the community by prohibiting the further development of garden apartments and apartment buildings, and the conversion of single-family and two-family dwellings into multifamily dwellings deserving the character of the neighborhood. Although the phrase "medium density" is not qualified under Section 17.04.040C6D, small and middle of number 2A, the ordinance clearly contemplates a maximum density of 10 units per acre as of any day. In other zones such as the C4 district, where mid-rise apartments are conditionally permitted, the maximum allowable density is 50 units per acre, and that's, if you can refer to Section 17.04.040, capital D, 6, small d, small middle of number 1, C. Importantly, the redevelopment plan does not report to supersede the density requirements of either the R5A or the IN1 district. Thus, there's three possible sections that the planning board could rely... You could look at the 50 units per acre in the C4, you could look, the master plan talks about eight units per acre in the 2004 master plan, the R5A talks about 10 units per acre. Any of these constructions would comply with the principles of statutory construction, and in doing so, the board would be applying a doctrine in paramateria, in that it would read all the sections of the zoning ordinance of the City of Brunswick together as a unitary and harmonious whole. These constructions would take into consideration the aforementioned sections, and all of which pertained to density, and as well as 17.04.040C6A, which pertains to the R5A district, together to determine the density thresholds for this development. There's been a long line of case law that has acknowledged the appropriateness of construing separate sections of the statute together where the sections serve a common purpose. Now, from last month's transcript, the city, through Mr. Patterson, indicated that, well, we've always kind of interpreted our ordinance where mid-rise is permitted and there's no density standards, so only where it's conditionally permitted is there a density requirement. So essentially, FAR, I'm abbreviating, I should say, Flurry Ratio, the record and purview coverage are used to regulate density where mid-rise is permitted. Now, there's a case on point known as Trust Company of New Jersey versus Planning Board, 244 NJ Super 553, it's a pellet division case from 1990. And that case says that, sets forth the rule that where the local zoning board of adjustment or administrative officer has construed a particular provision a certain way over a long period of time, the courts accord great weight to such interpretations. However, this case has no such equality to this matter, and such an attempt at interpretation should not be undertaken factually or legally. Let's first look at the Flurry Ratio, building coverage and purview coverage in zones where low-rise and mid-rise are permitted, such as in, well, we look at Area 2. The Flurry Ratio is 2.5 to 1. The purview coverage is 95%. Building coverage is 90%. In the R6, it's 0.3 to 1. The purview coverage requirement is 60%, and the building coverage is only 25%, nowhere near Area 2. In the R7 zone, and a lot of this was testified to by Mr. Gemma, while you have a 2.5 to 1 Flurry Ratio, the purview cover in that zone is only 70%, and the building coverage is only 50%. So in fact, the R6 and R7 both have requirements that any, and in fact, they have these requirements who read the ordinance, that any new residential construction should entertain the scale and proportion of the surrounding residential development. The bottom line here is that Flurry Ratio and purview cover are far more restrictive where they are currently permitted than in Area 2. And I submit that this board has never interpreted this ordinance with a Flurry Ratio and purview cover this premises in Area 2. Not only that, I would point out that Flurry Ratio and purview cover are also regulated where mid-rise is conditionally permitted or permitted. And when you look at it in that respect, the interpretation that's been made doesn't make sense. Does that mean that FAR and purview cover are ignored altogether in that scenario? Of course not. All three standards are applied as they should. That's why the provisions that I'm talking about must be read in paramateria, so the density can be applied here in this application. Now legally, I believe that FAR would be, Flurry Ratio would be an inappropriate measure of density. First, it is inappropriate to approve density requirements for residential uses, Flurry Ratio. And that, the court said that in Randolph Town Center Associates LP versus Tatchip Randolph, 324 New Jersey Super 412, 415 Pellet Division, 1999. They found that FAR standards are, FAR standards are generally utilized to regulate commercial uses, whereas density restrictions, which limit the number of dwelling units per acre, achieve the same effect for residential development. Now, Flurry Ratio, it doesn't regulate density. It doesn't regulate the number of units were used. It just talks about how much square footage, how big your building can be. There was another case, Price versus Liberty Market Union City. That is an unreported case, I have copies for counsel if they wish to see it. Well, all that case does is it just indicates that, there's a quote in that case which indicates that the FAR variance applicant and the applicant for the density variance under D5, they have to make different proofs, so it's not appropriate, different proofs are required, so it's not appropriate to use one to interpret another. The purview coverage has absolutely no relation to the number of users a development has. I believe it would be inappropriate to regulate density through a purview coverage ordinance because purview coverage, ladies and gentlemen, is a bulk density requirement regulated by subsection C of 4055D 70, i.e. through, and I believe to regulate density through subsection C would subvert the jurisdictional Flurry Ratio, which has sole jurisdictions, which the zoning board has sole jurisdictions at seek variances from the zone's density restrictions. And that case is RUBS versus Slot H O W R, that's S-L-O-T-H-O-W-R, 389 New Jersey Super 377, 384 Pellet Division, 2007. So a plain reading of the Trust Company case that I cited earlier makes it clear that this board cannot make an interpretation if the application of Flurry Ratio and purview coverage would result in arbitrary capricious application of density requirements. Indeed, there is nothing in the ordinance more liberal than 50 units... Indeed, there is nothing in the ordinance more liberal than 50 units per acre for mid-rise. I'll get into that later. That was part of Mr. Gemma's testimony. That would be a reasonable interpretation to find that a, to find that a D5 variance is not required would require you to ignore the other ordinances in this city's zoning ordinance. And as Mr. Gemma said, you can't do that. Your redevelopment specifically speaks to that. You know, and this is the triple down effect. It dovetails with everything we've been arguing. If they build 25 units, they probably don't need a parking variance, and they wouldn't have to build a four-story building. So in short, I believe that a D5 was required and that the notice was insufficient. Now, I'm going to move on to the rest of my closing. Very briefly, I just wanted to incorporate my reference and recite the procedural arguments I have placed on this record previously. I will just list them, I will not re-argue. First was the burden of proof is always on the applicant. Secondarily, you cannot use the evidence of other applications. And that doesn't matter whether this application is appeared in front of you on other applications or perhaps there is an approval from a redevelopment agency that's being referred to. In and of themselves, that is improper to prove the proofs of this present application. I talked about the use variance previously. I had talked about the ingress egress driveway being a variance, not a waiver. I had certainly mentioned the conflict with Mr. Booker in which I argued that the board should have been reconstituted at that time. I also touched upon the fact that all public comment presented this matter prior to October 14th should be considered by this board as part of its deliberations. Now, Madam Chair, on many occasions, and even tonight, you've indicated to folks, you know, don't be repetitive, and that's certainly what Gemma and you all contemplate, I understand. But what respectfully, one thing that was never said here was that, you know, comments that they made prior to 10:14, you know, could be repeated, you know, here. And these here exist, since they're not being considered. So I had also touched upon the fact that my clients had not gotten notice of rezoning, and that was filed of 4055D 62.1. You know, getting into the rest of this, I'm going to just talk generally for a moment before I get into the specific testimony and legal argument that I have. But for the most part, this application was about a parking variance, to be sure. It's an application that requires double the amount of parking in the ordinance. Now, I submit to all of you that you don't have to be a planner to realize that in and of itself, that is a substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance. And the variance that the applicants are seeking should be denied for that reason alone. I would submit to you that the actual observations of my clients and our experts trump the extrapolation of census figures and the hypotheses presented by their experts. There's nowhere for this extra parking demand to go except Main Street and spill out into the surrounding streets, which are also at capacity, which has been admitted by the applicant's experts. I will talk about how the exception request cannot be requested for, among other reasons, there's a self-imposed hardship here. I will also mention the fact that waiver on street permits doesn't address any substantial detriment to business upon Main Street and its inhabitants. Now, I want to mention a case at this point. It's O'Donnell versus Koch, 197, New Jersey Super 134, Pellet Division case from 1984. And that case is really the antithesis of what is going on here in this application. I believe that it was a funeral home located in one of the busier locations in Hudson County. And what that case stood for is that if he was an applicant or proposing, and I believe it was an special apartment in the case for the funeral. If you're proposing to alleviate a dangerous condition on the street, well, that's grounds to get a variance. And of course, here, we don't have that. We have just the opposite. I'll briefly mention that I had argued during the course of the proceedings that there's certain performance standards, or things that look like performance standards, right, that I felt were the variances here in this case. One of which was light out, it was another variance, it wasn't sought. And what we heard in testimony is, oh, yeah, we'll fix it. We don't know how, we don't know when, but the point is that there's a total dearth of proofs for that variance. And I would also note that the landscape requirements are not there. You know, variance is sought where proofs were provided. Specifically, 17.07.07.0 C1A, privacy plantings on either side of the building, 17.07.07.0 C1C, two shrubs and one shade tree for each 1,500 square feet, not covered by the building improvements. I would submit to you that paying money into the city coffers doesn't address the required proofs. I also talked about the driveway of the access and egress to this property, that that was also a variance. And again, no proofs of any kind were submitted there. I cite again Wallow versus Shipbottom, 227 New Jersey Super 29, which stands for proposition, if there's a deviation from the zoning ordinance, it must be a variance, it cannot be a waiver. Generally speaking, there has been no showing that this site is particularly suited to the proposed ones. Yes, we do say that there's a use variance required here. There's been no showing that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. There's been no showing of no substantial impairment to the master plan of zoning ordinance of the city of Brunswick. There's been no showing that the site egress and egress is safe and efficient. There's certainly not been a showing of hardship. In fact, Mr. Hughes indicated across examination very candidly that this application does not involve hardship proofs. There's been also no showing of a better zoning alternative under C2. This application will not promote the free flow of traffic in the adjacent roadway network. And getting more specific as to the parking variance, I want to refer to the board to Section 5.21 hyphen 3.1A. That is, I'm now getting into the risks and standards. It talks about there being an exception if the provisions of the standard are impacted or there's a hardship. Well, we know there's no particular condition of the land that exists here. So, and the hardship is self-imposed because it was created by an applicant because they want to build four stories of residential units where they could build two stories and comply. Moreover, it talks about the exception allows de minimis exceptions, and that's 5.21 hyphen 3.1 F. And, you know, by de minimis, you know, my interpretation is one or two. Mr. Littwornia talked about five or six, they need a percentage, you know, to it, which should come out to, you know, five or 10. But here, we've got a whopping 55%. That's not, that's not de minimis under any stretch of imagination. And the RSIS goes further and says that 5.21 hyphen 3.1 G states that the granting of a request for de minimis exception must be based on the finding that the following criteria are met, that it's consistent with the RSIS, that it's reasonable, and again, it's not reasonable when they're proposing less than half the required spaces. It meets the public health and safety, and it takes into account the existing infrastructure and possible future development. Then moving on to Section 5.21, 3.1 F. It states that when the judgment of a lawful approving authority, that would be this board, on-street parking is available, only that proportion of the parking requirement which is not available on the street shall be provided in off-street parking. Thus, if there is, if no off-street parking is available, which is the case with Main Street, as we know from the admission of the applicant's experts, the required parking in this case of 90-plus spaces must be provided on-site. Mr. Littwornia, you know, testified that, you know, actual conditions have to be studied, and we know that that wasn't done either. I would submit to the board, I tried to find some case law on this. The only case I was able to find was a case of Blumen, BBN versus Planning Board for CLC. Now, this is an unreported case. I do have copies again for Mr. Kelso and Mr. Rainfall. And I just wanted to just quote from that case. And it talks about what a waiver is and what an exception is. And I find it instructive to how this board should proceed here. Although throughout these proceedings, the term exception and waiver have been used interchangeably, they are in fact different proceedings under the RSIS. The board may grant an exception if the design deviation is de minimis and conforming with the standard is impractical, given the nature of the property or would impose undue hardship on the applicant that we've discussed this week. The board, however, does not have the authority to grant a waiver request but must make that referral to the Site Improvement Advisory Board, an extension of the DCA, which may approve a waiver of any site improvement standard in the interest of public health and safety. In short, the board does not have the authority to preempt the DCA's waiver procedure through the ambit of a de minimis exception. So I submit to you, as a board, that the standard here is not what a state bureaucrat thinks it is in responding to a municipal official. The standard that must be followed here is in the regulations and the case law that I've just indicated to you. Bottom line on the parking variance, there's no hardship, there's no de minimis here. The site has to accommodate the required parking and can't. And all this adds up to the fact that no variance should be granted. Now, there have been times during these proceedings when my clients have said to me, you know, gee, it seems like it's our group to prove our case. And as we know, that's not, that's not true. And I would submit to this board that the testimony that was elicited across examination of the applicant's experts, as well as the testimony from my folks, indicate that the applicant did not carry their burden. I mean, we began with Mr. Broder testified back in October. He confirmed that one floor of these seminars, and that three floors would be open market. And he recognized that that three floors of open market could have a different parking.